Good evening, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Wilmette Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Boyer.
Here.
Mr. Coling.
Here.
Mr. Robke.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Chairman Duffy.
Here. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based on the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4.1 of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3.1 of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next regularly scheduled meeting on March 13th. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village board is the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendations. There's one small exception to this rule. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five village board members must vote to approve it, rather than a simple majority of four. There is one other small peculiarity to our proceedings of which you should be aware. This board does not operate by a majority vote. We operate instead by a tyranny of four. In other words, no matter how many board members are present on a given evening, in order to get a positive recommendation from this board, an application must receive four affirmative votes. Ordinarily, this board consists of seven members. Tonight, however, due to some absences, there are only five members present. Ms. Roberts, as Assistant Director of Community Development, sits with us tonight in an advisory capacity only and is not a voting member of the board. Please be aware, therefore, that a vote of three to two in favor of an application will technically go into the record as a negative recommendation with the legal effect that I have previously described. In recognition of this unusual feature of our procedure, when we do not have all members of the board present on a given evening, we give the applicants who are scheduled to come before us that night the option of requesting a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is March 7th. There is no penalty for asking for a continuance. No such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there is no guarantee as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the pre-printed agenda located on the table near the door where you first came in. When your case is called, please proceed to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from staff these green booklets containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe your application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the podium to others who wish to speak either for or against the application. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, though we would ask that you keep your comments as short and to the point as possible. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence, and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on an application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceeding will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding, and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you're about to give? If so, please say, "I do." Thank you very much. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case this evening?
Our first case is 2017 Z-63, 238 Kilpatrick Avenue. It was continued to tonight. Unfortunately, the applicant and his architect were not able to attend, so we are asking to table to the next meeting, March 7th.
So do I have a motion to table to the next meeting? Thank you, Mr. Robke, Mr. Coling, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well.
Our second case is 2017 Z-65, 1020 Forest Avenue. This case was also continued to tonight. The applicants are working on obtaining a traffic study, as was discussed when they were last before the board, so they are requesting that the case be tabled to May 2nd.
Do I have a motion to table this to May 2nd?
So moved.
Mr. Coling's motion, Mr. Schneider's, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, as well.
Our third case is 2018 Z-7, 1057 Linden Avenue. This is a request for a 15-foot side yard adjoining a street parking space setback variation, a 276.58 square foot side yard adjoining a street impervious surface coverage variation, and a 77.71 square foot rear yard pavement impervious surface coverage variation to permit a parking pad on a legal nonconforming structure, and a four-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation to permit a second air conditioner condenser.
Beautiful. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi. My name is Robert Frankel. I'm the owner of 1057 Linden, and I have two requests. First is, I want to add a second air conditioner next to the existing air conditioner, which has a six-foot setback instead of a 10-foot setback. And I have two hardships. One is, the people who had the house before me rehabbed the house, they only air-conditioned the first floor, and they never ran ducks up to the second floor. House was built in 1890, there's no way to get the ducks up there, so I have to put an air handler on the second floor, run a line down, and put an air conditioner right next to the existing one. The neighbor is in favor of it. She wrote a letter of support. And both air conditioners are going to replace the existing one, they'll both be quieter than the old one. So that's the air conditioner part of the request. The other part is the parking pad. The hardships are, it's an irregular-shaped lot. There's no really other good spot to put the parking pad. The neighbor actually is on my property, she uses part of my property of access to her garage, and this is the logical spot to put it. So the irregular shape of the lot is the hardship there. So those are pretty much the highlights.
Where are you keeping that second car right now?
Well, there's a garage.
Right.
And so there's no spot for a second car.
So you have two cars?
Well, I own the property. It's a rental property.
Oh, it's a rental property?
So I'm going to be renting it out.
Okay. So you're just trying to get a second space for tenants?
Right.
And it's a single unit that's there, right? As far as...
One-car garage.
No, I mean occupancy-wise, there's one...
Right, one single occupancy, right.
Yeah, okay. So it's not like it's a two-unit building, it's a one-unit building?
How long have you owned this?
About 12 weeks.
Do you recall, did you do any searching as to how, was there a formal easement granted to the neighbor across your property?
Actually, there's no easement granted to the neighbor.
But it has been used for a long time.
Right. Legally, I talked to my attorney, she might have a case that, by necessity, that's the easement.
Sure.
There's no other way she can get it.
Also, did you know, you probably not recall or don't know that whether a variation was granted on the existing condenser unit?
I don't think so. It's been there over 20 years. I would be surprised.
Any other questions?
So you bought this 12 weeks ago, and you, I mean, you knew what you were buying. So, I don't know, it seems a little odd to me that when you look at the standards of review, I mean, yeah, it is an odd-shaped lot, but still, I mean, you knew the condition, particularly of the driveway.
Yep.
I mean, the parking situation, so it seems a little odd to me that you'd be coming for a variance right away.
Well, they don't want to make a sale contingent on the variance. So the idea is, there's really two issues. Most people who rent have two cars, and also the existing garage is just, it's a touch under eight feet, so if you have a big vehicle in there, it's hard to actually pull it into a single-car garage.
So, did you say you made the contract conditional on the easement, or no?
No, I said, "I didn't."
You didn't, right.
Right, I didn't make the...
So you own this property, now you own it for 12?
I own the property, right.
Okay. Who owned it before you?
A couple without kids, their names were the Drexels.
And they lived there, right?
No, they had a rented, too.
It was a rental as well?
Yeah, the last year. They lived there previously, and the year before they sold it, they rented it.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
What is the dimension, the correct dimension of that pad?
10, the proposed dimensions, did I want to put, I think 10 by 18, was that it?
I got 9 by 20 on this page you submitted.
No, that was a letter, but then I talked to Lisa, and we added a foot just to make sure the car wasn't scraping against the garage every time they pulled in.
So you're going to need another curb cut there?
No, we're going to use the existing curb cut. We're just going to come off the curb cut and, you know, pull in there. We don't... Hang on a second.
So, you know, and I meant to do this on my way over here, and I did not, because I drove by the house earlier, and after rereading some of the case, did anybody look at, are there any parking restrictions on Linden, which I don't think there are, or are there any parking restrictions on Poplar?
I mean, there are parking spaces there, I don't know if there's a restriction on 2 to 5 a.m. parking or whatever.
Right. I think it's, I don't believe, my recollection is there aren't any parking restrictions on Linden, so you can park overnight on Linden, because I know there's rental properties on Linden right there, because we had a case for one, I believe, many years ago. But I meant to look on Poplar on my way in, and I was running late.
Poplar, I think there is. Linden, no. I think there is a 2 to 5 on Poplar.
So, so there is a way, I mean, if people have a second car, they can still park right in front or down the block, half a blockway or something like that?
Right, Linden, there's no parking 8 to 10 in the morning, Monday through Friday, but then after that, there's no restrictions. There's just no parking on the north side of Linden. So I'm just parking on one side of the street.
And a two-hour restriction in the morning?
Right, and it's to deter commuters.
Commuters, yeah.
And then the commuter lot is, you're free on weekends, but there's no overnight parking on the weekends.
Mm-hmm. All right, any other questions for our applicant?
On the drawing, I just want to comment on how you're going to lay this out. I don't know, your cars are 20 feet long, but on the, this drawing here, you show the 20-foot budding sidewalk, and I assume you don't want to have the cars...
Pardon?
You don't want to have the car, the rear end of a car encroach the sidewalk, do you?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
If you look at this drawing?
Yeah.
And the, see the 20-foot dimension?
20 foot of...
Depth.
Depth, the length.
The 20-foot by, did you see that? That intersects with the sidewalk, or butts exactly the sidewalk.
The sidewalk, right. The sidewalk goes past it, and the 20 feet goes off the property line, touches the sidewalk.
That's right. It encroaches on the property line, that's another way of saying.
Goes over the property line.
That's right.
Where's the sidewalk? This is the street, that is the sidewalk. So 20 feet comes into this sidewalk right there, right? So it touches it.
That's, yeah, measuring to the point where it meets the sidewalk.
So at 20 feet, it touches the sidewalk.
And that's the zero, right?
Yep.
Well, is there, you know, I guess, I'm getting the sense from the board, everybody might be looking for a greater explanation of hardship.
Yep.
Right? Because that's one of the standards that we have to apply, as we're charged with as a zoning board. That's one of the biggest standards we look for, other than safety, and I guess there could be some concerns, I might be speaking for the board, that it is on the sidewalk, and so that might cause some safety concerns. So we're trying to weigh those things, so if there's additional hardship, you know, detail or explanations you can provide to us.
I think the biggest hardship is precluding a lot of potential renters with just having one car. The house also is very small, it's, the house is only, it's a three-bedroom, but there's only 1,400 feet, and, you know, another option for some people, if they want to store bikes or something, you know, they might even use the garage for storing the bike and park the car outside.
Well, other than, other than the economic issue?
Okay.
Right? If there's some, something with specifically to the conditions of the lot, really, you know, and the area, so that's really where we're looking.
Yeah, the main hardship would be what I stated, the irregular shape of the lot, and the fact that the neighbor uses, you know, part of the lot as her easement, doesn't really leave any other spots to park. See, on the right-hand corner there, that's my land, and the neighbor drives over there to get into her garage.
Right, which would be, which would be the impervious. You have four different requests, and so you have the side yard, 15-yard side yard, the side yard adjoining street impervious, and then the rear yard impervious, really is what is, is a condition that's created by your neighbors. Additional impervious that's going over your, you know, you're serving a lot, and she's a done. So that, that I can understand, but I think that's part of it, but I think the struggle is that, you know, that's, you know, more of the setback issue, I think, people, that's the sense I'm getting from the board. I don't want to speak out of turn here.
Can I ask a question for Lisa? Lisa, if, would, what would happen, what would be the variance request if he did a parking pad off Linden toward the covered porch? Just for argument's sake.
Sure. Yeah, it would be, need a setback variation, because it would be in the front yard. The required front yard is 34 feet, and I think the house is at 24, 26? Plus, they'd have to get approval from the engineering department to get a curb cut, which I doubt would happen.
How much room, if, how much room is there from the neighbor's drive to the back of the house, if you came, but that doesn't, that still doesn't solve our impervious surface or our...
What was your question?
To use the neighbor's driveway and nose toward the, toward Linden? Knows the car.
The back.
So point the car north-south?
That's still trying to solve the problem. I'm not, I personally don't see a hardship that dictates the need for a second parking space. There may be, if there were a need for a second parking space, other than a strictly economic need, which is specifically excluded from a criteria?
Yep.
Then these other points might be relevant.
But we, but don't we encourage two-car garages, and to get the cars off the street? Don't we try to do that wherever possible?
It's clearly not possible here, and there are many, many houses in Wilmette with single-car garages. We certainly encourage new development, new construction to have a two-car garage.
Are there any other questions for our applicant? No? All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak either for or against this case? Is there anything else you'd like to add before I close the...
Is this divided into two sections? Because that's going to be a tricky thing.
Yep, I know. It's not right now. Is there a way that we could create it? I mean...
You mean if you wanted to withdraw a portion of the application and proceed with the other portion of it?
Maybe that's the better way to look at this right now? And come back for what you feel may not be amenable from the board right now?
Yeah, maybe that would be a better way to go.
So withdraw, you'd like to withdraw the parking pad request?
Try that again at a different time.
And maybe take a look at it again, all right? So, we're going to amend this, correct, to be a, where does it start? Right, it's right here. We're going to say, "Request for a four-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation to permit the, to permit a second air conditioner condenser," period, right? We're getting rid of everything before it. Is that right?
That's what would happen if you took out the parking pad.
All right, is that something that you would like to do?
It sounds like that would be a good idea, so yes.
Okay. So, I am going to, let's see, I got to close, all right, so you know, yeah, close the case, and ask if there's a board member who'd like to make motion, starting at this last portion of the sentence down here. All right, Mr. Coling.
Can I ask a question before we do all this?
Yeah.
Lisa, if you took this lot, and you superimposed with all the permitted setbacks, the buildable area, what would it look like? What would be that triangle? What would it look like?
You kind of figure, I'm not exactly sure where 15 lands, but it's going to be...
What I'm getting at is, and I agree with where we're going, but I'm not sure you could ever, you could not construct, as shown here, you could not conceivably construct a, anything, even the existing building, 1490 Square, could not be constructed and comply without a variance. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Look, he's suggesting it can. Go ahead.
All right. For case number...
Yes.
2018 Z-07, move to, for a 4-foot side yard air conditioner condenser setback variation to permit a second air conditioner condenser at 1057 Linden Avenue in accordance with the plan submitted.
Who's second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Robke. Mr. Coling, your motion. You can have a seat.
As it relates, I mean, the need, the fact that the second-floor addition that was built, was built in a way that doesn't allow duck work to go up, and you want to have another, you want to have air conditioning up there, and that has, you have to have a second condenser to do that, so I think that those create a hardship. You already have a first condenser that's not compliant, you're going to sit them next, you know, side by side, so you're going to have a six-foot instead of a 10-foot setback. The neighbor doesn't have an issue with it. The more modern condenser should be quieter than the older condensers, so I, I think this is something I could support.
Okay, Mr. Robke?
I take no exception. I think we generally consider the condenser that's going adjacent to an existing one with the replacement. I would agree, I would expect the noise between the two of them to be equal or less than what would be their existing. We haven't seen any evidence that a duck work couldn't be accommodated. I'm sure it could by losing a little bit of wall space or floor space in a corner, but I think, again, this is a very reasonable request, given that there's an existing condenser already in that location. It's supported.
Mr. Boyer?
I have nothing to add.
Nothing, Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Robke's comments, I kind of, you know, there's nothing telling us that it can't be done, but it's really not an unreasonable request to replace the existing and put a second one there to accommodate, to make it easier to accommodate the second floor condition. So I, too, have no problem supporting it. While we take a vote?
Mr. Coling?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
Yes.
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Duffy?
Chair votes yes as well. So this will go as a positive recommendation of the village board. The meeting is on the first, or no, 14? Shoot.
13.
13, thank you. Could you please come up? Sign one of these letters acknowledging some dates and your presence, and the other one, you can take with you. That's on, move for, see if I can get there. Thanks. Move to authorize the chairman to present, or to prepare the report and recommendation for the zoning board of appeals for case number 2018 Z-07.
Second.
No, I need a motion.
Oh.
So moved.
Thank you. And a second from Mr. Boyer. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Aye, as well. Okay, Ms. Roberts, when you are ready.
Our next case is 2017 Z-8, 569 Hunter Road. This is a request for a 19-foot side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition on the legal nonconforming structure, High Crest Middle School.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We're really nice people. Honest.
It's good to hear. My name is Gail Bushemi. I'm the business manager at Wilmette Public School District 39. And this is Sandra Moon. She's from STR Partners, our architecture firm. And I wanted to talk a little bit about how we got where we are today. Our original building was built in 1930, and has had numerous additions over the years. It is very unusual in that the building has locations currently over the property line or within the setback requirements. District 39 has not seen a decline in our enrollment, and we have been servicing over 825 students at High Crest for several years. Due to the enrollment numbers, we do not have enough classrooms for our students and staff. Over a year ago, we started having meetings with our staff and our architects to see what were the most critical needs, and the overwhelming response was, "We need classrooms." We have teachers on a cart. We have teachers moving from room to room to teach. We have lack of spaces for any small group instruction. We have teacher sharing rooms. Our teacher lounge has moved, I've been with the district for nine years, it's moved probably four times. Right now, it's not even in a great location. So without this addition, it would present a hardship to the Board of Education, as well as the community as a whole. By adding the four classroom addition, it will address these needs, thus allowing us to use the property for its intended purpose. The granting of the proposed variance, variation will have no impact to adjacent property owners, nor change the essential character of the neighborhood. We have some drawings, if you have any questions.
I'll just briefly, you have these documents in front of you, too. I think a couple points, an addition that Gail stated. The 2,000 additions were actually built over the property line of Park District. The Park District actually has agreed to this new addition. The existing 1955 addition actually does not meet the requirements for current setbacks as it was built, too. But more importantly, the reason for putting, placing the classrooms on this end was that it had the least amount of impact to any other educational space.
You know what? I'm sorry, I'm about to be whipped with a wet noodle. You need to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry.
No, it's my fault. I, I was listening, I was totally wrapped in and listening to what you were saying, so, yes.
I'm sorry, I'll try to point from over here. You have the documents in front of you, too, but more importantly, the new classroom addition was put on the northwest wing of adding on to the 1955 addition, because it had the least amount of impact to any other kind of educational space. Within the boundaries of the property and the setback, the only other options were either to omit parking, which is much needed for all the staff, as well as buses and everything else, or to take away playground space areas that are also used by students, too. So it was the most logical from a standpoint of construction at the end of a corridor of an existing classroom wing as well, too, so.
So how many, you're adding, what, four classrooms?
Adding a total of four classrooms. It's two on each floor, and then additionally, in the middle, we're adding small group rooms that can be used as pull-out spaces for those classrooms, or also accessed from the corridor for other teachers to use.
I assume the Park District has no objection.
I'm sorry.
The Park District has no objection.
When was the plan developed?
I'm sorry?
When was the plan developed? When was the plan developed?
It's been over this last year.
Last year? And really, the only request is this side yard setback. It's not, there's no, yeah, there's nothing else. And the Park District has not submitted anything, right? In writing?
The Park District, the Park District...
Because they're your neighbor that would be impacted by this, so...
Correct. And they brought it in front of their board, which they approved.
I'll trust you on that. Seeing how you're already a few thousand square feet into their, under their property with other additions. Do we have any other questions? No.
So it's just going to, what, butt up to the other building, right to, from the parking lot line, kind of to the building structure that's there already?
Correct. So the existing, in this diagram, that's called Exhibit SP, the yellow is the new addition. The east edge is the existing building. It's right at the end where there's a stairwell right now, which is also on some of the other exhibits, if you want to take a look at that as well. But part of that was also keeping it in the northwest direction for the axes, so that we're not impacting the parking lot either. We end up taking out, I think, three parking spaces that we recoup with some...
Oh, yeah, the ones that are on the east side there?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and you have ample parking, because I think our requirement as a village is only one spot per classroom space. Is that correct, Lisa? Something like that?
Something like that.
Something like that, she says. So otherwise, it would be on here, that you needed parking relief? All right, any other questions? Nothing? All right. Thank you very much, ladies. Pretty, would you like to, seeing how you're the only person other than our presenters, would you like to speak either for or against this case?
I'm surprised.
I would need you to come up to the microphone, though. I apologize. And I need you to introduce yourself, say where you live.
Okay, my name is Judy Morton, and I thought more of my neighbors would be here. We have a home along one of the edges of the school, and I was, I got a letter in the mail, which I appreciated very much.
Which edge?
We are behind the basketball courts, so we are on this edge. And I was curious where this was going to be placed.
You just speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. There's like three people that watch, and, you know, they want to be able to hear.
Oh, no. So I was curious where this was going to go. And it looks like it's that yellow...
That's it, yeah.
The words in the yellow box are just words. You're not going into the park at all. Okay, that's what I was, that's what I wanted to make sure. I was wondering if we were going to lose park space, or if it was getting closer to any home areas? I just came to check.
Yeah, this is several hundred feet, it looks like, from even the property lines of the single-family home development.
Yes, it looks, yeah, it's over by the parking lot and the gym, right?
Yeah.
On the gym edge?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's quite far. I think, yeah, really, the most impacted party here is the Park District. But they're not as severely impacted with this addition as they were from the 2,000 additions. Because the 2,000 additions come out on to Park District property. See how the, there's property lines on there? Yeah.
The red line. Okay, and we weren't here in 2,000. Okay, so they lost space then. Okay.
Right. Right, so, yeah, so this is a very minimal impact relative to those other additions, so. All right, any other questions?
Nope.
All right, great. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. All right, can I have a board member make a motion on this? Mr. Boyer?
Regards to case number 2018 Z08, I move to recommend granting a request for a 19-foot side yard setback variation to permit the construction of a two-story addition on the legal non-conforming structure, High Crest Middle School at 569 Hunter Road, in accordance with the plan submitted.
Mr. Robke, your second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Boyer, your motion?
One request, it's a school in an R1A residential district. Due to the unique lot conditions in relation to the neighboring lot owned by the Park District, it creates this need for variance. There's really no detriment to the neighbors, Park District. It's far away from any residential areas. The use continues as a school, and it seems that the Park District has no objection. So I think it meets all the standards, and I'm in favor.
Mr. Robke, your second?
I agree. I think the only surprise here is the location of the existing property lines, which...
Yeah.
I don't think anybody from the general public or a user would have guessed where they're located. I think there's no impact to any adjacent property owners or to the community. Fully support it.
Great. Any other comments? No? No? Yeah, I too, this was, as I read it, like Mr. Robke said, a little surprising about where the property lines are, but, you know, it makes sense. I think it meets our standards of review, and so I too would support it. All right, why don't we take a vote?
Mr. Boyer?
Yes.
Mr. Robke?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Chairman Duppy?
Chair votes yes as well. So that's going to go as a positive recommendation of village board. Meeting's on the 13th, right?
Yes, 13th.